Counselor Barnes would give us opening prayer, please.
Our heavenly Father, we're thankful for this opportunity we have to meet as council at this time for our committee of the whole meeting. We're grateful for the opportunity to serve our community, our citizens. Pray that thy Spirit will be with us and guide us in the things that we discuss. We will make wise decisions and that are beneficial to the community as a whole. We are grateful for this opportunity to serve in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
So, welcome to our Carson Committee of Councils Committee of the Whole on fifth day of November two thousand nineteen. And the year is just about wrapped up on us here already. We'll call this meeting to order and we'd like to welcome Corey from the local Carson channel. And Mr. Kevin Phillips will be talking to us in just a few minutes here. Additions and adoptions of the agenda. Are there any additions? Trying to see if we had anything added yesterday. Not really. Yes.
Home of adoption of the agendas outlined.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Welcome. Welcome to the newspaper, the Temple City Star. And we'll just jump right in with Mr. Kevin Phillips who's going to talk to us about electricity in general.
If I could, we spent some time yesterday trying to figure out how this should look. So, we have a bit of an agenda, walking you through your role as the only in the distribution system. So, I think we have a decent agenda. It jumps around a bit. Yeah, it jumps around a bit, but we think we capture it.
As long as you understand, we're happy.
Yeah, well, I think Jeff and I, between the two of us, have sort of been out pretty well. Yeah, I should introduce myself and how I ended up helping the town out because I was with NMAX for a long time, City Calgary before that. So, we, at that time, had relationships with Leftbridge and Red Deer and the other municipal distribution owners and including the council for a cloud, Carson, and the whole town. And when the industry was restructured and sliced and diced, it turned out that the distributors ended up with a bunch of responsibilities that were going to require large IT systems to manage them. And so, because NMAX was definitely going to build their own, offered to provide those services to all of those counties. And Leftbridge and Red Deer eventually built their own systems and went on their way. But we've continued to serve the towns. And yes, when I left in two thousand and five, and I was consulting on my own, I talked to Ray Burton and said, hey, we could use some help down here figuring out what was going to happen then. It's pretty hairy at the outset of restructuring and it took years to sort of sell in. So, I've been helping out with all of your obligations since then, just more or less keeping up with the drivers that you have as a distribution owner and how you have to relate to other parts of the industry like retailers who sell electricity and transmission companies that you connect to. And really just understanding the layering of the legislation and regulations that you have to follow. And it gets complicated at times because we always are trying to think of new ways of doing things here. And we're always going back to the legislation and testing it and see what we can and can't do. It's pretty tight, actually. Pretty well-defined. So that distribution owners don't interrupt or get involved with other parts of the industry. Because as a distribution owner, you're regulated by yourselves in terms of pricing. And you have a certain set of formats for your rates. You have formats for interactions electronically with other parts of the industry. And that's all been set up so that you can be just a common delivery service for multiple retailers who are actually buying and selling the electricity to your customer. And so that they can have a competitive market to operate in without any interference with, you know, using the distribution system. It's just a common service and everyone gets the same service. It's reliable and it's cost-effective and it follows the right tariffs structure so that it's electronically billed to those retailers and they can parse it to their customers and it all shows up on the customer bill. So, it's very structured in that way, through legislation and regulations. I'm sure it's all working smoothly. And so, when I mention NMAX is offering some of those services to you, that's the wires side of the business, wires side of NMAX that is, really serves your distribution system with the same computer programming and systems that they use. And that's NMAX Power. And that's things like metering and reading the meters and taking that metered data and absorbing it into their system and then comparing it to all of the ins and outs of your system and their systems and in the province. So that all the energy gets settled out to every customer in every month. And you can make a bill out of that. That's really the cumulative service you get from NMAX Power. And so, that's a contract that you're paying on an annual basis for. And it's, it was probably the most complicated part of the industry restructuring was to build the machinery in between to, so these relationships all could be verifiable and, you know, such, and such that you could actually bill people on that data. So, it's been years getting the veracity of the data and the accuracy in place. So, it seems like a simple thing until you start trying to do it and it became very complex. Now, it's super formalized. We haven't had any trouble here of any significance since we got the, there's a fact called UTHI that sort of is balancing your load all the time. And anything that you can't precisely say came in and went out is unaccounted for. And your unaccounted-for number was bouncing around for a while. And we were able to go back to NMAX. This was interesting about why it's good to have a large-scale provider of a service like that to get their help to resolve it. It took several months to figure out what the problem was and we made all kinds of different changes and efforts to deal with it. And it showed up, to me anyway, that that was the kind of service you're paying for. And if you were stuck in that position by yourself, it would have been really difficult to figure out. So, as much as sometimes I think about, you know, well, maybe we can just do this ourselves. Maybe we can figure this out ourselves, get a, you know, piece together a couple of different service providers and, you know, maybe we could save some money doing that. Well, Pinoka tried that for several years. They were taking part of the wire services from Epcore and part from another service entity. And those two couldn't agree on whose fault it was ever when anything happened. And the town was sitting there in the middle going, well, it's one of you. You better figure it out pretty quick. And it became so bad that Pinoka finally moved to NMAX to make it all work. And it works because it's all in-house at NMAX. And when I say in-house, so the other part of this is the regulated rate option where it's the retail offering that as a distributor, you have to offer that tariff. Because it's the tariff that fluctuates monthly, but everybody can get on it if they don't sign a contract. So, that's actually your tariff, not a retailer's tariff. NMAX Energy puts it together for you and bills it for you, but it's actually your tariff. And so, that's another service that NMAX is providing, but it's not a, there's no cost for that. They provide that retail service just for the benefit of being able to put it on their bills and manage the billing with their name on it. That's really the upside for them. So, the regulated rate option and the distribution tariff, those are your two main tariffs that you are legislated to manage and provide to your customers. Backing those up are terms and conditions that say, describe the whole relationship between the customer and your service. And then you have some incremental little fees for different types of things. Your crews do like meter changes and that, that you guys look at every once in a while, every year. Sometimes we tweak it. The dollars don't jump around too much at the end, but but that kind of encompasses the tariffs that you're responsible for. And I guess what I'm doing is paying attention to any changes that occur to legislation that might affect how you manage that tariff or present it or bill for it, anything like that. Because there's a number of rules coming from the Utilities Commission that apply to the whole province, including you guys. So, I'm always paying attention to what's going on that might affect you. Because you, really, that's the compliance part of my role, is to make sure you're in compliance with everything that you're required to be doing. And so, when I see that we're not in compliance with something, that's when I get Jeff to tweak things to make it happen so that we are. One of them recently has been code of conduct. That's another overarching obligation of you as a distributor, to make sure that you're not giving beneficial treatment to one of these retailers who are supposed to be competitive. You know, say, NMAX, because you've got these other relationships. You can't say, well, you know, you should be going to NMAX Energy. So, I know you all went through signing the form and saying, no, no, we don't do that as a council. And that's all code of compliance, code of conduct. So, that's something else that gets tweaked once in a while and we just make sure we're doing it right. So, it's quite interesting that to, there's all these layers, but once you get into it and follow it, it's not that much to keep track of. And it doesn't change as often for small distributors as it does for some of the larger ones that just are worrying about more of the details within their own shop. We fortunately don't have to do that. So, that's definitely one of my roles that I worked through Jeff to give effect to. And then the other part of it is when we get down into the, well, we have to negotiate these contracts every once in a while. But once you get into the distribution tariff, that's where your costs all come to the fore along with your cost of getting grid service. And I guess those are really the main costs. You have some overhead costs to go into it. That's the other thing that I get quite involved in is helping Jeff sort out exactly how your costs compare to other surrounding areas. Close to county, for instance, with Fortis, how your costs shake out and how do the ultimate rates compare. We'll probably be going through that exercise pretty quick for twenty twenty. I'm not really used to saying that yet. Twenty twenty. We're just looking at the costs now, making sure we understand what the Fortis rates are going to be doing. But we'll get to rate proposals in the next couple of weeks. So, it's really trying to stay ahead of those obligations so that your revenue streams are matching your cost flows. Anything, the tariffs is doing what it should be doing. And trying to use that information to develop strategies for sustainable ownership of the asset. And of course, you're all familiar with the efforts around renewable power center, which was a great strategic concept that we pushed pretty far. And still holds a lot of merit, given it might have just been a little advanced. And, but with technology changing the way it is, it may just come to fruition at some point.
Is it all the usage of that? How much has been used? Our site you're talking about? Wait, you're talking about, oh, I'm on the wrong topic.
Well, yeah, that's what we generically call the concept of having the town become its own grid. But you're probably thinking of the solar plant. Well, that's a big step into that realm. Just the fact that you're becoming a generator of scale on your own is a big step to independence. Independence, what does that mean? Anybody can become independent from the grid. All they need is a battery and a solar panel. Yeah, maybe a little bit of gas backup too.
Just a quick question. Any idea where New York must go with all this stuff?
Well, that would be judgmental. I'd say backwards. From where you might have hoped it was going. Because, you know, your solar installations for sure have been funded in part by the carbon tax revenue. So, that's what's being peeled back. And so, there's no more solar funding available for those types of installations. You got it under the wire, literally under the wire. It was probably one of the last ones that were granted funding through that. So, it's brilliant.
Another question, Kevin, I wanted to ask. We had talked about this a meeting or two ago, about the AUC and the way that they seemingly rubber stamp every time there's an increase. I can't remember any time since I've been on council that they've ever said no. And does that ever happen? I mean, tell me a little bit about that. Tell us a little bit about the way that that happens.
Yeah, well, every application that a utility commission regulated utility like Fortis, say, puts together for annual cost has probably about five hundred questions in it. So, there are a lot of no's and there's a lot of, no, not quite that much, but this much. And then there's a lot of yeses in those questions because it's, every account is getting reviewed. How money's flowing this way or that way, from what part of the industry to another. All comes into play in those applications. So, they don't go through as much detail now as they used to, but there's still a whole bunch of questions in there. And they always end up getting something. That's the yes you're referring to. They always, they absolutely always get some portion of what they applied for, but it's rarely exactly what they applied for.
So, I guess part two of the question is, how is it they can apply so often? I mean, we have to make a budget every year. And we have a difficult time, every year we have to go into that budget. We either have to cut or add to or take away from, and that's our budget. But yet, some of these companies are applying several times a year and the rates are changing throughout the year. And it's very frustrating for our customers because they're asking. And of course, being that we're on town council, we're targets. And they come and they ask us, well, how come this went up again? You know, and what's the answer that we're supposed to give to them? And I'm just trying to figure out, is there any way that they can be held more accountable to make a budget that kind of we can count on throughout the year without having to break change all the time, several times?
Yeah, well, that's a fair question. It drives us crazy, actually, because
I have a very cynical response to that too, Kevin. I think if you were to ask the big distributors to accommodate municipal budgets, you'd get laughed out of the group.
Yeah, we probably would.
It's just not a priority for them and they'd rather we didn't exist. The preference is we're not here. So, to accommodate our scheduling isn't particularly a priority.
No, no, that's a good point. But it's hard to capture the whole scheme of things. But for the distribution level of the industry, for all of the large distributors that go to the commission, Epcore, NMAX, Fortis and Epcore, they do that annually. But those are like tweak applications. And overall, they've got a deal that's called performance-based regulation with the Utilities Commission. And that's a four or five-year period where they go in with certain costs and then they're allowed to increase portions of it by inflation and decrease others for productivity factors. And that sort of goes along, given these set factors, for five years. And that's it for as much as they can earn. And it's worked really well. They've just gone through the first five-year period and they're entering the second. And that has cut the time for going to regulatory hearings and process by eighty percent.
Oh, that's good.
It's been really good that way. The utilities will say they're not happy with certain aspects of it that they expected to earn more on thought they would make more, but haven't. So, it hasn't, it's been kind of like nobody's really happy with it. The commission feels like they've given away some things. The large distributors say, we're just not making any money here. So, I think it's probably working. And so, they have that overarching, so their applications are annual. And they say, within that framework, here's our costs and here's our rates. You know, we'd like to tweak a few little things by now. Okay, there's your rates. And those have been quite uniform annual settings. But those distributors are all connected to the transmission system or ISO. And its costs are set annually. The majority of its costs are set annually. But there's a huge component of it that are set quarterly. Actually, I shouldn't say that. They're set hourly. There are services that are provided to keep the system stable and they're buying generation and they're stabilizing this and they're bringing on wind. And there's all kinds of these dollar flows going on that happen to, you know, in real time and they set that pool price in real time. So, when they need to hire a generator to run in a certain area so the system in that area, transmission system, doesn't collapse, they pay them the pool price for running that generator. And then they'll do the same thing. They're doing it all over the province in different hours and the pool price is changing. So, those costs aren't forecast, say that.
Stable.
They're not stable. They change every hour and they add them up every quarter and bill them out to the distributors, the big guys. And that piece of the Fortis bill is what shows up on your bill as a customer of Fortis. And that's what changes significantly from month to month. It can change in the tens of thousands from month to month, what you pay for that component of your bill.
So, we've had this discussion before, but when our solar plant comes online and we're selling back into the grid, it'll be bouncing up and down like you were just talking about, depending on the time of day and everything else. So, we'll just, we're not quite sure what our return is because it's moving around all the time. Okay.
It's exactly like that, except now it's going that way.
Yeah, we're selling it to them, yeah.
Yeah. So, it adds some variability that we're going to get used to managing.
That helps me understand much better.
That transmission rider is what fluctuates wildly month to month. And so, we try to set your rates to cover an annual estimate. And sometimes I'm off and sometimes I'm not as off.
We usually are.
They're eating towards all of which. We're always getting low for sure.
But to that, counsel, you may recall that what we implemented, I think, three years ago was a reserve account. So, that when he was low, we reserved it.
We had it there.
And then if his estimates were high, we didn't affect the end user in the town. We pulled in a reserve to cover the difference.
Right.
It's a dark chunk of it in twenty nineteen, but that's another story. But yeah, so we're trying to stabilize that for our customers.
Yeah, thank you.
Guess what it is?
So, you mentioned the solar and that is going to have a number of effects on your bill, on your pain. And then you have this new, you have surplus. And that's something in just model to see what it might look like based on the performance of there's one solar here and then you're reading that. Or something that performs similarly. And you've got that little solar edge monitoring system on your website. New system, its operation daily. And as you can see how different they are, you would think the same clouds are going to shade the arena as this building, but I swear, it's not the same. You get the arenas jumping up and down and this place looks like a little bunker or something. I don't know what your panel's mega rayer is going to do, but monitoring that. That'll help us per day when we can sell. When we can sell. And then you can be able, you'll be considering help. But for sure, you're going to get a fixed price for your town sites. Which is a lot of comfort. We don't do expect prices. We don't do expect prices right now.
They never go down, so.
Well, the last few years have been pretty, you know, stable and lower. But one thing that you've been managing is for the rate cap for the regulated rate option.
I sense.
That's been sad to watch. For you, you're watching to make sure the work is proper. So, that's just disappearing again. That's going without the cap, it's going to reduce your volatility into your regulated rate customer. Sites which we have quite a few of. So, if it becomes, if the market becomes more volatile, well, they did two things. Let me start at one here. There's a cap right now per hour, what they'll pay for a generation of a thousand bucks. That's cap is coming off. So, if the ASO, for instance, is desperate enough that they need to buy energy to ignore it or something's going to collapse and be behind it, they're happy to provide it at that time. And they, but they want thirty-five hundred bucks a megawatt hour for it, they're going to get it. And that's going to add to the volatility of all the prices for that month. So, given that and no cap, I expect your RRO rate is going to be more volatile and you may hear about it. Because it's your tariff. They'll phone NMAX first and complain to them, but. They'll phone NMAX first and complain to them, but.
And that's what's our tariff, right?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, yeah. They'll tell them it's your tariff, but they'll answer the questions and you might hear more.
Remember when you hear that, those customers have the option to sign in with any retailer and fixed price contract. They're choosing to ride the bulk town market, right? So they have some ability to mitigate that volatility.
So we're going to have door knockers, are you going to have a tariff on them to sign up?
No, I think that has been legislated away. No more marketing for electricity. Direct energy made a bad impression with that. So that was, no. No more of that.
So you have to go directly to them.
Get a question to Kevin.
Yeah, exactly.
All right. Kevin, help me out with this one. I've been thinking about it. Hypothetically, the major transmission lines that provide the town, if a storm, are down for days. Do we have the capacity with this solar farm to supply our home energy needs for the entire town or just percentage or how would that?
Percentage? Yeah, not the entire town, but equivalent to all of your municipal buildings.
Yeah, but I thought they had the capacity to generate more electricity than just our home needs.
Yeah, so anything, so that's true. It depends what your buildings are doing and how sunny it is. So if your buildings, for instance, in that case, you wouldn't fire up anything that you didn't need. And so if it was sunny, then you could divert that energy into other essential services. That's a really good idea, actually, to.
I figure we got to be here running the whole town. You're the force of the picture.
Yeah, well, it'd be a good question for.
If you want to get Kevin going on storage and stuff, he goes on forever. It requires a lot of that storage infrastructure.
Yeah.
And we've talked about that quite a bit, Kevin, recently. Mostly not so much on storing to run the whole town, but storing to manage peak demand and shave the peak. That's more fiscally attainable in the short term than having enough redundancy for the whole town if we had no distribution. That's a big order. That's a big to-do for sure. So there's a combination of on-demand generation, so stuff we can control, gas fire frankly, and storage. I mean, you think about it from a city point of view, that if there were a huge storm and knocked out the distribution lines for days and days and days, what's our fallback? What can we do to help the citizens in the town? We all huddle up here in the city center.
That's one option.
Yeah, that's one option.
Three hundred of us anyway, that's what we can fit in, James.
What about backup in your water plant, sewage plant? Do you have a backup?
So we've got generation and water, sewer, this building, the shop is going in now. Our lift stations have generation that could be either diverted, used for that purpose or diverted. One of those two options. So all the lift stations have standby generation. Hospital has generation. So there's a few facilities with gas generation.
Yeah, you probably have a couple of facilities.
Yeah.
So, yeah, you'd fire that up, but if you have some storage.
This is okay, we're not going. No, it's fine to go there, it's just so expensive, but it's improving. We're seeing, there was a municipality recently announced their freshwater storage facility is what was holding their energy storage. So the technology's allowing you to store energy in different mediums than, you know, a nickel cadmium battery, for example. Now you can store it in your water reservoir.
Yeah, in Europe, they use lakes.
Yeah. So there's more and more of those applications where you're using existing infrastructure to store large amounts of electricity. So we can water fry the fish or. They keep the geese off too, which is a benefit.
Good thing.
Yeah, I don't know how it works, but.
So we're going to have to put warning signs around there, "High voltage water, do not swim."
There's more energy storage happening in the ground, so in the soil and in water aquifers and things like that, you're seeing more and more storage happening there.
Yeah.
I know you're keen on that topic and look, because our cost savings from the distribution, if we can manage our peak demand as a community collectively, can really become significant. We just don't have the ability to store it. And even with solar, we don't have the ability to really manipulate it. We're going to get peak output, when we get peak output, whether we want it at that time or not. That's it. It's going to be when the sun shines and that's it. So we don't have the ability to manipulate the timing of that electricity. So we're subject to just what the pool is offering at that hour.
Any other questions for Mr. Phillips?
I think you have a couple other things still too.
Oh, sorry.
Well, the only thing I should touch on is the regulatory proceeding that the Utilities Commission is running right now around distributed system inquiry, it's called. But it's all about what technology is going to do to distribution systems in our area. And so everybody's there in the industry to pay attention to this because it's going to shape how distribution utilities operate in the future. Because right now, distributed generation is popping up all over the province in different shapes, be it gas or wind, even just storage. It's showing up and it's easy to manage because it's only here and there and it's not concentrated enough. But when it does become more concentrated, it's going to start to make it very difficult to maintain voltage levels and frequency standards on the system if you can't control all of the energy that's now coming from all different directions. And so the Utilities Commission set up this inquiry to start from scratch and they broke it down into three modules. First one is they're going to figure out what technology we're talking about and how soon will it be here? That's module one and they've had the technical conference on it and I've sat through it to absorb what I could and bring it back to Jeff, so we are on top of that. And but then it's going to go into module two, which is where the commission takes a look at how these new types of generation and services are going to attach and if they are clustered, what does it do to the wires that are in place? What kind of technology do you need to control all of that? Who should own it? Who should operate it? Does it change what the distribution utility does if suddenly they're in the business of aggregating a bunch of batteries so that they can control it and use it as they see fit to manage the system? Do they want to own the batteries? It's starting to open it up to all these conflicting scenarios if distributors start venturing onto the customer side of the meter or owning non-wire assets, as they're called. Because all of these new generators now are, to a certain extent, have the potential for displacing wire assets. They also have the potential for complicating wire assets and adding some, but adding a lot more equipment onto the existing ones so you can control it all. So the utilities are desperate to know, are we going out of business or are we just going to be shifting from wires into a new business to provide this energy around the province? How do we make money on that? How are we going to be regulated? Who will we be competing with all of a sudden? So all those questions come up and then once that's sorted out in the second module, the third one is, okay, now we know what the lay of the land will be, here's how we will treat the existing tariffs, we'll change rates to do this and terms and conditions to do that. And that's kind of the end result is, okay, here are the rules that come with this new world. So that's really going to be a seminal work for the commission to give us all a new feel for how this is going to.
It's mind-boggling where everything's headed. I mean, you don't think it'd go that much further than you just look at the cell phone the last fifteen years. Anything's possible now. Wireless, anything's possible now.
Counsel Barnes.
Yeah, Kevin, have you heard any rumblings about any of those scenarios with legislation that might put the kibosh on people going off the grid? The reason I ask this question, about two years ago, I read an article, some people down in, I can't remember who it was in, it was one of the New England states. They went totally off the grid with everything. And the county municipality came in and fined them and said, "You can't do that. You can't go off the grid with your electricity. You have to be on our grid system." They couldn't be on their own. Of course, they've just gone to the courts and I haven't heard what's going on there. So I just wondered if there was any of that kind of talk going out there because that's kind of a scary scenario, if somebody wants to be independent, right? And there's a few people out there right now in our county that are off the grid. Not a lot of people, but there are some.
Yeah.
And so I just wondered if that's ever been part of the discussions?
It's a big part of the discussion.
Okay.
It's a huge part because the distributors, for the most part, are in denial.
Yeah.
The ASO is in total denial about this possibility. And all of the legislation, well, as you say, none of the legislation complies with that. Because it's an inalienable right to.
Yeah.
Do that.
Yeah.
So it's like they've never had to, never said, "You can't do that." And so it's a complete possibility. So much so that one of the commissioners on the commission stopped the proceeding, stopped ISO in their tracks when they were going on about repeatedly talking about grid defection. That's how they described that independence, is grid defection. They were going on and on and saying that this isn't going to happen, we're just going to keep doing what we're doing and we're going to make it so nobody can leave. And the commissioner said, "Just, you know, just wait a minute." This is a reality, right? Yeah, I guess so. He finally had to admit, "Yeah, I guess it's a possibility."
Yeah.
He said, "No, it's a lot of possibility. You don't think that in the next ten years, somebody's going to build a box and all they have to do is plug it into one of your receptacles and it's going to tie in with your panel and it's going to supply you all of your minor requirements in house? You think that's that far off?" You know, the guy had to say, "Well, no, I guess it's not that far off."
Well, you see it in TV and videos and everything now, there's all kinds of ways now to get movies and TV for free, that you don't have to rely on everything. So that's why I was throwing that question out there because there's a lot of people that are, there's a lot of smart people out there, they're not all with the corporations, right?
No, absolutely not.
And so, I mean, I'm a realtor and I have clients that are off the grid and I say, "Good for you." You know?
We should move forward, we might be here all night. Is there anything else? If you guys just wanted to throw that out there. Is there something else you need to?
No, just that that's what we're paying attention to in this proceeding is, is making sure that you're prepared and have a sense of what's coming down the pipe.
A lot of things, yes.
Go down the wire.
We don't want any surprises. Any other questions for Mr. Phillips?
Well, I just appreciate when he goes to AUC hearings because I can scarcely imagine something more over my head and boring to sit in all day.
I'm going to make you.
Kevin will call me and say, "Hey, the AUC's having a hearing tomorrow." I'm like, "And I assume you can be there and we'll pay for that?" Because I don't want to go. So he gives me the layman's terms the next day and we're in good shape. So I appreciate it.
Well, that's why we have Kevin here to help us.
Well, Kevin, thank you so much because it's a complicated story. I remember Marion trying to make sense out of it all for myself and so I understand.
It helped me a lot, understand a lot more tonight than I ever have. Well, thank you.
It's good to have you on board with us. We need you.
If we could move to the number five adoption of the minutes and we have a chance to read that.
I will make a motion to adopt the minutes of our September third, two thousand and thirteen meeting.
Favor? Thank you again.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Kevin.
Do you mean?
Yeah.
Is anyone somewhere TV? I don't know what time you're thinking of leaving.
I'll text you.
Sounds good.
Careful on the streets.
Yeah, thanks for the icing. Thank you.
I'll text you.
Thank you.
Okay, byline policy, Mr. Jeff Shaw. We already have a budget review.
I've seen that for a while. Let's get ahead on a few key pieces here. I have three different things. This one is called a supplementary budget documents and I'm going to refer to this little package as we go through the big spreadsheet. It's essentially departmentalized budgets. So what is water doing? What is wastewater doing? Electrically doing? Individually, because I want to talk about some of those specific impacts. So it's just the capital there. And then the main one, any changes since we talked last meeting are in green. I'm not going to necessarily hit on all of them because some of them are very minor and inconsequential in a line to some degree, but changes nonetheless. Okay. Let me get to my marked up piece here, get some things out of the way. Okay. So we'll work off of the eleven by seventeen, but keep this one in proximity and I tried to, I think I did this, this will flow the same sequence that the big one will flow. So we can kind of go through them in the same order. So we've made some tweaks. The budget has come out since the last time we talked, the provincial budget, I should say. And so it gave us some answers, not good answers, but answers nonetheless, so we can manage with those. We, and I'm not trying to start anything for later, there's no ICF contributions in this budget, so that isn't determined yet. We'll talk about that in close session a little later. I just wanted to make that note. There's still a couple of ambiguous points. Policing is, it wasn't mentioned in the budget and I took that as no news was good news in the short term, but there's a webinar with the minister on Friday morning at nine o'clock that they've asked us all to dial into on policing. So I'll be dialed into that at nine o'clock, no, Thursday, I want to say. Are you coming in for that? Yeah. Yeah. So we will, it's developing still. Now I'm just second guessing the day, Mayor, one second. Thursday at nine o'clock.
Who else is on the policing side? The mayor and?
Counselor.
Counselor.
No, it changed. Counsel Drew and Counsel Banary.
Counsel Banary.
Oh, Counsel Banary, Counsel Drew.
Somebody has to be saying.
Counsel Drew.
No, I'm not on there. No, it's Counsel Drew, Counsel Banary.
He'll need to be aware of that. I don't think Counsel Banary will be around.
So we'll see what happens there. With this document, and we're early, I'm going to say this again without, I'm not to panic, this is still a deficit position of three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Three hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, but I want to throw out a couple of things, meaningful things tonight that I think can make a big chunk without having a detrimental effect on services. And it's really in how we're going to manage some projects going forward and our expectations of a couple of projects going forward. But I think we're going to, we'll be able to maybe come to some consensus, I hope, on how to approach a couple of these things. So with all that, again, down the left is your GLs. I'll try and go through that fairly systematically. One zero one one four zero, we've pulled out the policing costs until we know. Now remember that, sorry, this is the revenue side, so it'd be what we would tax the citizens for policing, we'd pull that out. On one zero seven eight four one, the budget did tell us that MSI operating was not being affected, so it was purely on the capital side. So we had that reduced in the last budget based on an estimate, so that's back where it was. One zero seven eight five one, now this is one I want to have some discussion on. In this budget, there is a hundred thousand dollars of costs for studies that is all tax funded. And this is one that I want to discuss. There are three studies in this budget. The water study with the county, the storm water study with the county and the Blood Tribe, and the trade corridor study. And how we have them, this is there again, the revenue side, we put in half of the money anticipating that if we don't get an ACP grant for it, we approach it with the county to. we approach it with the county to fund half and we fund half. So right now we have 50% of the water and storm study revenue in here. The other 50% cost will come later in the budget and 100% of the trade corridor cost will come in the budget.
Okay. Where do you have the trade corridor?
So there is no revenue on it right now.
Yes.
It'll be in the AC Dev piece later, right now. But this is what I wanted to throw out there. Uh, the ACP, I've done the ACP grant for the water study. So I just have to get a resolution from you all next week at the council meeting and it will be submitted.
For one?
Yeah. The storm one, no news from the Blood Tribe. I'm proceeding with the application just as a town and county initiative. And then the CARES grant has reopened, plus some other options on the trade corridor study that we're going to explore to see if it will be funded between Western Diversification and a couple of different programs there or CARES. Now there's a webinar on CARES tomorrow at one o'clock Angel and I are sitting in on where the province is announcing the new application format, what they want to see. And so we'll know a lot more about that tomorrow afternoon. So, but when it comes to budget, here's what I, I want to throw out there. Of our $382,000 deficit, 100,000 of that is tax funded studies. 25,000 for water, 25,000 for storm, 50,000 for trade. We can keep those studies in the budget if we put a funding for them on the other side. So we could say right now, under our other grants, that CARES grant for 51,000, $50,000 will cover it. The, the point there is though, if the CARES grant doesn't come through, we don't expend the expenditure. But it buys us 100 grand in the budget. The question we have to, I need you to debate and discuss on this is, is there a threshold you're prepared to spend in cash that affects the bottom line? Or are we only going to do these studies if they are funded via one route or another? That, that's the question. Because if the answer is, we're not going to do the trade corridor unless CARES, WD, or any combination that I pay for it, well then now I put it in the budget as funded and I simply don't do the study until it's funded. But it affects the bottom line. It adds revenue to the budget. So that's what I want to throw out. I know we're early to just jump into another debate, but it is kind of philosophical with those three studies. We could, we could gain $100,000 right now if we only put them in, if we only spend if they're funded, is what I'm saying.
Hey.
Go ahead.
For sure, when it comes to water and sewer, I would say, I would prefer to see those funded through grants.
And I apply for the whole amount of ACV, all 30,000.
I, I really would. When it comes to the trade corridor, then we need to have a discussion, how essential is it to us for the AC Dev purpose? And if for the AC Dev purpose is essential, then I think we need to come up with some cash. But I really honestly believe that all the cash is not something we can afford at this point in this type of deficit. But Counselor Salk, I would like to hear your opinion on this one because it's really something that is in your portfolio.
Yeah, sir. I'm going to be brutally honest, okay, Mayor? I, I agree with you that I think that, you know, swallowing the whole pill is a little, a little rich. But I'm going to Community Futures tomorrow night and making my pitch. And my pitch is going to be even if Western AC Dev doesn't provide some funding for a half of, say, a partnership of that amount, then I want Community Futures to dig the change out of the couch or whatever and fund it. Does that make sense?
All right. So essentially what you're saying, you really feel it should be funded through grants or through?
And I, and I feel like Community Futures in one form or another should be a 50% part of it.
All right. Okay. Thanks.
Have a moment.
Yes.
To Counselor Salk, I just want you to know how I feel. Of all these things, I think trade corridor is probably one of the most important things on the plate here that I think that we need to be moving forward with. I see a great potential down the road and if it doesn't, if it doesn't go, if we don't keep moving it there, it's going to slow down. And I really think we need to move forward with that if we can't do anything else. That's my view.
And I might add to that, we're kind of at that point where until we get the study done, I don't know where else to go.
Yeah.
There's too many unknown. I agree with you.
If I could ask, so there's a couple of things, um, and I'm not very familiar with CARES, by the way, that grant, but, um, and we're going to have three more discussions on budget, by the way, between now and end of year. So what I'm wondering is for now, if we agree that water and storm are going to need to be funded, so it's a contingent expense in the budget, if we don't get the income, we don't spend the expense. That just bought us $50,000 right there in this budget. With the trade corridor, do we want to leave a little bit? And I mean like, do we want to have 15 grand of tax funding, for example, if these other things don't fully come through? Because sometimes it does help to have a little skin in the game with these grants. And I'm curious, do we, do we set instead of 50 aside, is it 15 or 10? Because we've still bought potentially 85 or $90,000 just by making that decision tonight on this one line.
I, I would propose that we put a certain amount there. $15,000 I think wouldn't be a bad slush fund to add to what you can muster for us.
Counselor Brown, oh, sorry.
I know you will be very persuasive.
Counselor Brown?
So where is the county with this? Are they? I'm just wondering where the county is with this because you're speaking of partnerships. I would think that partnership is an important one for us to have in accordance with the trade corridor.
I think the correspondence we received from the county was, we are very much supportive of this as long as it doesn't cost us anything.
Yeah.
That was explicitly their request.
Yeah, it was written in.
Now, having said that, Counselor, I have asked Counselor Nish to, and I'll have to sort of reiterate this one, you know, send a text. Can you go back to your council and tell them that in order for this partnership to really work, they need to have some skin in the game, even if it's a normal amount of a few thousand dollars?
Yep.
So what, did you present it to the county or did they get an email or how, how was it presented?
They got the same letter that every other municipality got.
Right.
Just the numbers.
Right.
Requesting letters of support.
Right. Sometimes going in person with your passion comes across a little bit. Walking up the passion maybe, this would be profound.
So where are we at with all of this?
Well, I'm curious, do we leave for now? Again, this is not setting the budget. Do we leave $15,000 that we would be prepared to put that much cash in it if we could get $35,000 in other funding?
For the trade corridor.
Yeah, for the trade corridor, for now. And let's see how this shakes out. It gets us a long way there already.
Yeah.
I support.
Okay, so I'm going to put for now, $15,000, um, town funding, the rest is going to come from external sources.
Proposal?
No, 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 we're, we're just hashing stuff through now. Like I said, you're going to get another printout of this three or four more times before the end of the year. So it's, yeah, it's a lot of paper and I'm sorry, but you don't want it on the regular sized paper, I'm sure.
Okay, so as far as the water, that?
We haven't heard anything back for the grant. Are we talking about?
So the water, ACP just opened on November 1st. And so I have, I believe until the end of the month for applications, but there, um, I have to have a resolution from you to support the application. So next Tuesday, that'll be on.
That's what we're waiting for, the county and all this stuff there.
Well, I've got their letter actually. So I got that from the county already and so next Tuesday you're going, you're going to, I'm not going to tell you what you're going to do, but I'm going to request that you make resolutions to support the ACP grant for the storm study and the water study. And then I can submit those.
All right.
And then we'll see where that's going.
Yeah.
Yes. Please don't take that as here's what you're going to do, but I don't know why you wouldn't. Let's put it that way.
Okay.
Okay, we, and again, like as always, if there's any other things on the pages, stop me. I'm just kind of looking for green lines. So page two. I want to talk about this one more just a bit later, um, because I have a statement just for campground with some projections. But what we changed here is we looked at, if we get those sites up and running by next spring at the campground, sorry, guys, that 17242, then what percentage increase in revenue should we expect? But that trickles down considerably to how we're renegotiating the contract.
Exactly.
Right? So that I'm going to talk about on the expense side. When do we get there?
Counselor Brown?
I just have a question. Where is that at? I've been asked lately.
Uh, last week they put the water lines in. Yeah, or told me they were digging water lines.
So our goal, sorry, our goal is to have an up and running come camping season, correct?
The goal is underground infrastructure as we can work through the weather. And then the, um, the rest of it in spring.
Yeah. Yeah. This came up with the golf, unofficial golf meeting that wasn't part of anything that they were worried about that.
Yeah.
And we said, it's, it's in motion right now.
Yeah, they were digging water lines last week. So we're going to talk about that. I actually want to have a bit of a bigger discussion on the campground, which we'll, we'll get there on the expense side, but that we did, we amended that line based on additional revenues. And I've, I've talked with contractor already and they're totally 100% about looking at that contract.
Was page two at that point?
Yeah, and I don't have anything else on page two. Um, page three, there really isn't, uh, well, the only thing on page three that will, will get hopefully some, a few more conclusions on, but it's the next business item is your amuneration policy. So we still just have some broad estimates in there. Uh, so we'll talk about that a little more later. Uh, page four, I think was really minor. Nothing of note on page four, actually. Like just, we're, as we get hard quotes in between these conversations, we amended the few hundred dollars here or there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, page five, I wanted to talk about for just a minute here. Wait, is that what I want? Yes, I do want to talk on page five for a minute. And, um, page five, the green line is on the new website. This has been a bit of a strange little road and my feeling is we're going to have to revert back to my attitude when it was, came to dating in high school, which might be looks over function. But, um, I've been waiting on that for like a week, Counselor. Come on. What I mean is we as a staff went through and said, if we had a blank slate and could build a website to do everything we wanted it to do, what would that be and what would it cost? Because we thought, we're going to start over, let's really, so we had some meetings and we set up a shared document to kind of say, what if we could do all your animal business license renewals online and pay for those online? And what if you could, you know, search property information, tax, what if you could do all this? What if we could manage documentation and payroll and do all this with the website? Well, as Shem was talking with consultants and people who do that work, the price has been as high as $50,000 on this thing. And then settles back down to around 20 grand again. So we're going to have to probably frankly back off some of the, you know, kind of high end functionality of this thing and really look at the aesthetics of it. And, and see what we can do from an aesthetics point of view. Because I'm, I'm still not really comfortable with the 20,000 that's in there.
Well, you're talking about doing all this stuff online. Is there a cost savings to this and, I mean, lose a worker, for example?
Yeah, it probably doesn't displace anyone. It's really set up more for the convenience of the end user. Right? To try and provide more convenient options for the end user.
A ton of cost benefit for us.
Not a lot, no. It wouldn't be enough for a whole full-time equivalency. You know, I can't see that at all.
Counselor Brown?
Well, I mean, the goal of any website, I would think for any business that I've dealt with, or it's, we want it selling card stick, right? We want people to click on there and, oh, see everything and be able to easily manage going different places. Ours, we don't have that. Ours definitely, I don't think sells us. And so I, I've, I've seen a lot of, because I've been looking at a lot of other towns and, and they're just more user friendly and they're more, if I'm an investor, I'm going to be looking at that. You know, what, what does this community have for me? Well, you're not going to see a lot on our website. And so to me, I just think, you know, I like your idea of y'all sat down and had the shared document, putting on what was important. But I do think it's important because it sets, everything's digital now and we need to be good-looking digital.
So if it says something like champions live here, it would be.
Yeah, that's right. You know, the temp, the template of the website, the layout is pretty consistent with a lot of municipal websites. It really is. You pull your bar down from the top and it's living here, working here.
Yeah, it's functional.
That's pretty consistent with how it is, right? And the other thing with aesthetics is it is very subjective. So you and I may never agree on what a good-looking website looks like. You know, that's the other difficulty with it. So we got to find that happy medium. We just thought, Counselor, if we're going to go through the exercise of starting from scratch on a website, let's at least know
For sure.
what the options were. Let's not limit ourselves with a platform or a software that can't do what we eventually need to do.
Counselor Salk? With, with the website we have now, is, is there no way we can add to the functionality of it as it is?
Uh, not, it, it's limited because we're using a very simplistic, uh, and it's cheap. I, I don't mean it even in a, it's affordable.
Yeah, affordable.
It's a fairly cheap platform and it, so with it has limited functionality.
Because I agree 100% with what Counselor Brown is saying. I'm looking at it from a business point of view and I do have a lot of people that call me and they say, there's nothing on your website. We can't find this, we can't find that. And, and it's frustrating for me and I, so I try not to say anything disparaging about it. I just say, we're working on that.
It's interesting because for one that uses it, our whole economic development profile is there, property that's for sale is there. Um, you can go the ORSC interface to look at property information for everything. It's all there.
People are looking for more stuff though.
But, but do we have more to give them?
Yeah.
So that's the question. So I don't know what more is when you have every bit of your data there, but could it be organized differently?
Yeah, and maybe that's what it needs to be done.
Could some of that be done? Sure. You don't even want to mine down on this thing for ages to get there, right?
So I, I guess if we can reorganize it and make it more functional, more functional, maybe we don't need to have a new website. Maybe we can work with what we have.
Yeah, Shem's looking at, he, the last time, so after he got some of these quotes and feedback, he said, "Look, let me look at what I can do on the aesthetics, potentially on a different platform," which isn't necessarily, I mean, Corey could speak to this way better than I could, but doesn't mean it's an incredibly expensive platform, but just something where we can maybe manipulate a little. Because we're in a template now. Really, our site is working within a template and we don't get to vary from it very much. It's kind of a fixed thing, but it's user-friendly on the backend for us.
Yeah.
Right, that's the, it's not all code and, you know, it's not all difficult to navigate. It's a point and click on the backend too. So we got to find a happy medium.
Well, you keep on finding some solutions and if you can save the money, good, but...
Counselor Brown.
I guess Chris is a member today about her website and so much of the functionality is that it's not updated often.
I was going to, to talk about that aspect.
So there's a perspective.
Yeah.
There's a perspective, I guess, entrepreneur that was looking at the businesses. We didn't have an updated list of the current businesses in town.
Yeah, the Chamber of Commerce needs to proper move it.
And our economic development plan needs some serious attention in terms of updating.
Yeah.
Which I happen to have a copy.
Counselor Brown.
If I can ask Corey on the slot, or not, he doesn't know, but you do websites, you've seen our website, what are your thoughts on our website? Do you, do you think we could do a little better? Do you think there's a more friendly avenue for us as far as websites go? I mean, those are, that's your thing.
I would agree with Counselor Salk where it needs to be updated more often. That's the biggest complaint I have about the website. Uh, you can always find cheaper, you can always find better, you can always find whatever design.
But if it's unpopulated regularly, it's useless.
It's the content, you need to keep the content updated on it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Sorry. He's like...
Yeah. I'm not supposed to talk. Yeah, but you were, you're the impartial media correspondent.
He said, "Breathe," but I want it.
So we'll continue to drill down on this as we get closer to December. Um, we just, we've been struggling with that. Um, the next one that I, I don't want to develop too much here, but it's in the closed session, is the Peace Officer Initiative. I want to talk about that thoroughly in the closed session because I have some thoughts on that and it has a fairly substantial impact on the cash portion of our budget, the tax generally, the cash portion of the budget. So we need to talk about that a little bit later. I just, I see it because I'm going through it here on page five.
That was going to be my next question.
Yeah, well, we will certainly get there. Um, for me, I would like to go to page seven. Six was really minor. Um, and seven is where you go to your first supplementary budget document, so this little package. The first page in there is a water department statement. So what we tried to do is we tried to, we literally cut and paste out of this document and then just took the accounts associated with each function. Now, I'll caveat that just a little bit. When you look at things like wages, which is the biggest item in water, I'm not going to sit here and tell you that it's exactly proportioned between water and sewer plant and public works precisely. It's just, it's not.
Because you have the fluidity between...
Yeah, those guys go back and forth every day, all day, they're doing different things. So it's apportioned in each, it may not represent it precisely, but it's how we're apportioning. So if you look at this first page, uh, and I, I think I have all right, the very top of our candidates says water department. Um, what we went through is our revenues, so we have any grants, um, domestic water billing, commercial water billing, water filling station, and then any custom work. Now, remember the custom work is when we do our own construction, we bring this, the wages or the margin on that back into that department. So that's the revenue side. And I know if you have any accounting background, our revenue is in brackets, which normally means negative.
Right.
Which when we get to the bottom lines really throws you for a loop. I'm like eleven years in and it still bugs me, but that's how the system spits out the report.
No, that's okay.
So that's revenue. There's one point, one four five million dollars projected in 2020 in water revenues. And then we go through the expenses, you got your wages and what we have to...
That's the actual revenue that's coming in there?
Correct. The one point one four five...
So it's not negative, it is not.
No.
The reason it's in bracket is because the bank is the one who have it in black and white in your statement.
Okay.
So they show it without brackets, but as a business, you show it as a bracket.
Okay.
That's the story. The other one's just a cash.
Goes through all the costs, um, one thing and it's, it doesn't affect the bottom line, but if you go down to two four one nine nine nine, we have all the amortization in there, but we immediately pull it back out because it's non-cash. That'll really skew your statements if you leave it in, but it's not a cash expense. So we take it out because we have to, we add it as an expense, we add it back in. So what this is showing is before capital, on the net sources of operating funds, we have an operating surplus of five hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, we're projecting that in 2020. And then we get into capital and we look at, okay, what are sources of capital revenue? Well, in water, the federal gas tax fund in 2020 is currently, we're earmarking a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in federal gas tax for water projects. And then we intend to spend two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in water projects in 2020, leaving us with a net, um, profit after capital of five hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in water. Now, that's a substantial profit in that department. And, but I want to talk about a couple of things with that. When we set up the rates years ago, we set it up in tandem with wastewater because on paper it is not as lucrative. But again, because the staffing and the function are so intertwined, we'll look at wastewater a little later too, we kind of look at them together and then you can see a collective profitability. But here's what's super interesting to me about this statement. Seven, eight years ago, the discussion was, we don't want taxes subsidizing the utility.
And now we have, we have...
And now it's opposite. The pendulum has now swung the other way. So what we see is after capital, I have a five, I have a half a million dollar surplus in water. Well, guess what that's doing? It's offsetting all the other operations of the town.
Yeah.
That's what we're using it for. Because we didn't, we don't reserve five hundred and seventeen thousand dollars of utility out of there, otherwise we'd have this massive hole in the operational costs of the town. And so our utilities now, at least water, and we'll look at some other ones, water has swung to now where it's a, a net contributor to taxation. And I don't mean that necessarily as a negative thing, it's just very opposite of where it was eight, seven or eight years ago.
Seven years ago, when we decided to treat the utilities as a business.
It's the other way, right?
Yeah.
The only caution and one of the things I would caution between looking at, at this versus say tax revenue is tax revenue is by and large almost completely stable. We can come in on two point four million, we can come in within the hundreds of dollars of what we'll collect every year based on estimates because it's pretty subjective or objective, so it's very objective. But with water, we can have massive fluctuations in consumption.
Yeah.
And so even though we might budget, and we saw this last year where we budgeted low and consumption was high, but when we get to the end of this year, I'll, I'll give you a spoiler alert now, consumption was very low. And so we're going to be under budget in our water revenues for 2019 because consumption was very low. It was cool, we got more rain, but very low consumption. So this is a more volatile source of revenue, although, um, with that kind of margin in it, I don't ever risk it being a detriment to us. I don't see a wild swing of half a million dollars in the revenue, right? But a hundred thousand, eighty thousand, seventy-five thousand, we might see those kind of swings. So last year we were able to take an additional hundred plus thousand dollars and add it to our major utility capital reserves because of water surplus, but I can tell you, we will not have that luxury this year. But that's okay because we added extra last year. You know, we, we, we were, had some prosperity in that.
You, you talked about this subsidizing other parts of town operations. I guess you'd have to ask yourselves, what would the rate period rather do? Would you round your taxes up a little bit or would you look at it as a user pay like you're doing now?
Right. Yeah, I don't want to spend that as negative. I'm not suggesting it is, but it's different.
Yeah.
Counselor Brown.
The nice part about this is that there are a lot of properties in this town that we don't collect taxes on. So therefore, yes, users pay, they're getting their fair share of that.
The, the other thing principally here is the, the end user to some degree, not fully, but has discretion over this cost.
Right.
So if I, I don't have discretion, I mean, except by actually moving my home to a different home, I don't have discretion over my tax. I, my, how I live doesn't affect my tax, but my water bill can be affected.
There's another, uh, element also that we, we cannot forget is that the price per cubic meter is extremely competitive with other towns. And we even on the low end.
Yes, we're not overcharging.
We on the low end. When you look at Calgary or Lesbridge, they're way over a dollar per cubic meter, way over a dollar. And so I really think we need to keep that in mind, that we wanted to recoup from the utility, the maintenance of those utilities and get away from taxation. And I think we achieved that very well. So it's a success story, maybe even if it's a little too much of a success story, but is it?
What it does do is it gives you context next time you debate your utility rate by law.
Right.
Right? So you, you have that for context when that comes around. Now, what you have now, you've set a three-year, you can open it at any time, but all it has is a two-point, I think it's a two point eight on the average percent increase based on inflation. It was a inflationary index on the utility rates.
I was just going to say, this, this is kind of a buffer for us that I, I feel good about the way we're doing it this way because if, if all of a sudden we had a, you know, we needed to tax that extra five hundred thousand dollars, you know, because it got wiped out one year, holy mackerel, are we going to be getting an earful for that? This way, it's over a period of time that we're all contributing to this and it's helping us to keep our bottom line in a good place.
Creates accrution.
Yeah.
So I just want to make you aware of it, we'll talk about the other ones here as we go along too. Um, by the way, counsel court, we have dinner for six thirty, so we'll take a break in...
Fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes. You probably got a little gravy soup for that, right? And you better get your car. Um, so over the page...
Over in page eight now?
Yes, page eight. And again, on your supplementary document, if you just flip the page, it's the wastewater department. And this one is actually a two-pager, um, it goes over just barely onto the next page. Um, so all I wanted to look at here was again the same thing, what are our revenues in water wastewater? What are our costs? How are we funding, um, capital? And, um, the, the moral of the story on wastewater is it's projected to have a hundred and forty thousand dollars surplus in 2020. And so that's the contribution to taxation or to general revenues of the town from that utility.
No question. Is that fifty thousand dollars coming out of that hundred and forty? We're taking it out of there?
Sorry, tell me what fifty thousand?
Okay, I'm on the, the last big page of that.
Yeah.
The forty thousand dollars for the capital funding that we're putting aside, is it coming out of the hundred and forty grand?
So no, it came out before the hundred and forty grand.
Before that, so after that.
If you go to the first page, um, there's a line that says net sources or uses of operating funds. So operationally, we're projecting a hundred and ninety-one thousand dollar roughly surplus. We're bringing in MSI of a hundred and forty to fund capital. Then we're self-funding a hundred and ninety, so out of the revenue of the, of the department and then leaving us with a hundred and forty.
Okay.
So it's a fifty thousand dollar capital deficit, but leaves us with a hundred and forty thousand.
Right, okay. So we're good there too.
So again, it's not as lucrative as water, but it's certainly, um, still holding its own just fine. And with water and wastewater, that's one bad wreck away from being zero, by the way.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah. Well, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Kim. I just wondered, Jeff, is there somebody that set aside for the repairs of that line that seems to give us trouble?
So in your, I will show you in this, let me find the number, yes, so in two four two five oh one, we still have the seventy thousand dollars annually for the outfall line. So if we can get that remedied, that adds that seventy thousand to your bottom line, which if we can get that remedied sooner than later, that may affect 2020 budget, um, which would be a great boon to us to try and balance the budget.
How's that coming along?
I'll talk to you about that in the closed session.
Yeah.
I haven't updated it, I'll, I'll talk to you about it here soon. If we can have time for a closed session tonight, we'll find out.
Yeah.
Um, the next thing I wanted to talk, just flip over on your supplementary package here, the next one is garbage because it's also the next in the budget. This is a much more modest, um, a utility, but that's always been the point. We haven't looked to, the dollars of this are just altogether smaller. I mean, this is a department with annual revenues of three hundred and eighty thousand. And, um, the only capital we have in here is we try and buy two new hydraulic dumpsters a year. And so that's the eighteenth that was in. So this department has a modest profit of twenty-five thousand eight hundred and nine dollars. And, um, one of the reasons why it would actually be ten thousand dollars less, and I wanted to ask you as counsel about this, in two four three seven six five, for the last three years, I believe it is, we've been transferring twenty, we've been taxing twenty thousand a year and putting it away for a recycling reserve. Because at that point in time, there was talk, we were talking about a brand-new building and having a great big new building. Well, after talking with support services and having Kim come present, I'm not sure we're saving for a grandiose building. They don't want to manage more volume right now. So we have, we took that, we kept a reserve, we're taxing ten thousand dollars, at least proposed in 2020, this is still taxed ten thousand for, the baler's going to need replaced, you know, the trailer's going to need replaced, and so we're going to need thirty thousand here, forty thousand there. But we didn't think we had to be as aggressive, but if you disagree with that position, then please let me know, that was a decision we made to try and trim some things here.
I have a question on that. We've talked about that, they felt that after they got that new trailer, that that was going to be the answer to the issue and they found that it's too small. Is, is that something that's going to have to be replaced?
Yeah, eventually. Uh, and then depending on what can happen, solid waste is...
That's going to be a part of the discussion we're setting up altogether. Nobody's taking anything anymore, so what are we going to do? Just keep...
It's a problem.
Or burn it down or...
Put building a wall. Apparently.
The, the markets are shrinking so badly for all the recyclable goods that, with all the best intent in the world, and I'm a recycler, it's kind of pathetic to see what's happening at the end of the day.
Get rid of garbage, that ship's even all around the world trying to get rid of...
Yeah.
They don't want to...
Going back to a discussion.
Discussion for another day.
I think what Kay said was they don't want, they don't want a facility that accommodates more volume. They don't want to manage more volume.
Fix it up for them.
This provides the program for them and that's their first priority and rightfully so. But we can't burden them with excess volume, which is so counterintuitive and, you know, kind of what we've been told the last number of years.
This is a discussion that's going to be ongoing and changing.
It will, no question. So that was all I want to talk about there, just so you're aware of. The garbage utility, it's still, uh, we still have a fairly low per capita cost for solid waste management in the community. Um, and so that's still very, uh, very good.
There's something in the profit on that.
Yeah, and we have enough to cover a couple dumpsters a year with a little bit left.
Now, that, that was the question I had. What's the reasoning for buying a couple of dumpsters? Is it to replace the bad ones or is it just to have them?
Uh, yes and yes. Yes and yes. We get, in fact, Art and I were just talking about this, we get a ton of requests for dumpster here, dumpster there. Nobody wants to walk a hundred yards, they want to walk twenty, so they want a dumpster. And we're starting to get them everywhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, we finally got this one sorted out, I think, but we're okay. But, um, he's only going to have to walk twenty. Well, not even his, his committee. His people, his people only have to go twenty. The point is, when the, the program was initially set up, they were placed in strategic places and that's where they were. And then we've been really good over the years to accommodate, okay, well, you want one and okay, we'll put one there. To be frank, I know Darcy, this is public, he could use it against me, he's never really amended his contract to accommodate the greater number of hydraulic dumpsters we have out there, right? He does it as part of the contract and we probably are pushing our luck there, to be frank. So we need to look at, the other thing is they fail. They simply fail over time, they have mechanical and hydraulic components and they fail. So a few years ago, we bought a number of used ones and Art got to refurbish them and then, um, so now we have some parts ones that we use to fix this and that, but they rust out over time, they corrode. So some are inventory for replacement of current ones and some are adding to the inventory.
So here's my comment. I really like the idea of needs as opposed to wants. And back with, uh, I guess it was six years ago, the very first budget that I was involved in, we had thirty-nine thousand dollar shortfall, we had to find it somewhere. And dumpsters was one of the items, we were wanting three and we took away two, we saved sixteen thousand dollars on dumpsters there, six years ago. And I was the one who put forth that idea and we get one a year. Now you're telling me we're buying two a year, so I'm trying to figure out where that came from.
Yeah, so one thing why it's a little different environment is even if you took those out, it doesn't change the budget because they're coming out of reserves from surplus and garbage. So they're self-funded in the 2020 budget.
But I, I guess I'm really concerned about the one idea, you know, because people are getting lazy, I think. I mean, I have, I, I have them up behind my office and I'm glad that they're there, but I'm certainly not going twenty-eight, I gotta go further than that. But anyway, they moved them because, they moved them from here to there, right? And they've been there for a long time, but I'm seeing them all, it's starting to crop up here in different places, I'm thinking, what is going on here?
My idea is I'd rather see too many than too few. Because at least the garbage is going in there.
Part of it is, and I don't want to actually get into this tonight, but those bins get overwhelmed with county and blood reserve garbage.
Exactly.
Even we have signs up and everything else.
They're very quickly overwhelmed. I can't tell you how many times I come out of the rink, I say at 11:30 at night and trucks are backed up to dumpsters.
They're loading them.
I'll go over and, hey, how's it going?
Pay attention.
We have that discussion. That, that's a discussion for managing the overall thing another day. But there has been demand because of volume, for sure. And those are thankfully self-funded out of garbage.
At least our town is kept clean, it's not in the ditches.
Yeah, I'm not complaining about that, I'm just saying, realistically, you know, we don't want to have way too many because somebody want, doesn't want walker.
Page 10.
Page 10.
Page 10, the only thing I want to ask here, and I think it needs some more time, I don't know where we're at with, so 262333, where we're at with the $10,000 under Mormon Trail Chautauqua. I just don't know what to do with that one. We put it back in, we had it out in the last budget, last week? And we put it back in for this one?
Okay, so maybe from the meeting that we were there, what really they're looking at, at this point is the $1 per capita. So that may be able to trim some there.
And where are we at right now for capita?
Well, we were giving 39.9.
Well, it's, it comes to about $4,000. But what there was, there was a Chautauqua and McGrath and Raymond are not prepared to put that large amount. In fact, there is something else that Raymond mentioned is that if we cannot go out of the Badland this year, they might not even want to put that much money in there. So we have to kind of look at the Badland kind of contract that we have because I do not know, it seems to me we have to give them one year notice and if that's the case, they have a general assembly or mini, an AGM in, in June. So you may want to have a look a little bit at our contract here.
I can bring that back in the next meeting with that contract for more discussion on that.
So we're talking out of Chautauqua, staying on Mormon Trail, or they just can get rid of Chautauqua altogether?
Well, essentially, the Mormon Trail will be doing.
That was rigid as land.
Is going to start to be the, the item that sticks, but not, might not stick under that name. The Mormon Trail might be a pillar of a larger umbrella or a branch of a larger umbrella. So that's another thing that needs to be discussed sooner or later, but not at this meeting.
As I said, I went to the Chautauqua play last night, it was actually pretty good, it's focused on Raymond and War was quite good, too long, but yes, Counselor.
But why would we continue to give money to Chautauqua if it is nothing about parks in?
Okay, they, can, can we give it for another day as a discussion?
Well, it's just part of budgeting, right? So I'm, I'm wondering why we keep giving a dollar per capita, so four grand.
The dollar per capita goes to the Mormon Trail where four communities are together towards promoting the area. But the problem is, that has not been yet properly redefined.
I'll bring maybe this whole, that whole GL back to talk about our participation in regional alliances, Badlands, Mormon Trail, we'll bring all that back next meeting.
All right.
The only, the very bottom of that page is campground contract. If you turn to your next page in your supplementary document there, and I put a staple right, yeah, that's the right one. This is a, a quick look at the campground and the interesting thing about this campground is from a financial, just a purely financial point of view, it really isn't very lucrative for us. It's a break even really at best. But there's a bunch of other economic benefit to it, right? But if you look at this statement in 2020, if we look to that, we're forecasting higher revenues based on the new sites. We're also forecasting that same percentage of contract share on the expense side and we're forecasting a considerable increase in utility costs because they're going to be fully serviced sites. So we expect electricity and that to be quite a bit higher.
Okay, so.
Counselor Salk.
As far as rates, yeah, is there? And it seems to me like we're pretty.
Way low.
Yeah, I think we're pretty, very reasonable.
What are we at? 32, I believe, which you got to be a little careful, this water is 38.
Yeah, we have to go. We'll see if our water is still 38 after they do the campground.
Potentially, yeah.
That's why maybe this next year too, the base corner of our park.
Yeah. So we should look at that as part of the contract renegotiation and take recommendations from those contractors. Now, one thing I want to be clear on, the numbers in here, I do not want to compromise the negotiations with contractors, they're just numbers we threw in.
Right.
So we will commence with them here between now and the end of the year, but this is not my position by any means. It's just, we anticipate percentage increases in certain ways.
Counselor.
How often do we renegotiate that contract?
So we put it out last year, so we're just one year into it. I believe they did a three on this one, I believe is what we negotiated.
Okay, so we've still got another year or so before we next.
Two more on this one, yeah, yeah. But, but I already told them, there was, there was a significant change in what the campground is and it would stand to reason, we simply can't operate under the same contract.
Yeah, because it's going to be bigger, more work.
And they agree 100% by the way. I've already spoken to them, you bet, no question. There's no pushback there, Paul. So we'll commence that, I just wanted to point that out. And, oh, but one thing I, and this might be for another day because I know that it's getting long, but what I wanted to mention with the campground is when you look past the expansion in 2021 and 22, based on some hypotheticals, because we haven't negotiated the contract, really it has a $8,000, $9,000 a year profitability business, which isn't much. And if we want to look at this from a purely, and I'm not suggesting we do because this won't be a popular position, but if we want to look at purely financial, there's a lot of other ways to make more money on the campground than operate a campground. So for example, what if we sold it and we vendor financed it as an example? So let's just pick a number again, a million dollars for the campground and you finance somebody at 5% to buy it from you, now you get $50,000 a year from the campground, not eight. What if you leased it to someone just for a set lease amount, for 50,000 a year, it's yours, do what you want, it's private, and you got 50,000 a year? Utility is cable, everything, we're out.
Then their rates are set by them.
And, and their expenses are all theirs. Because right now, we have a management contract, but we still pay all the utilities, maintenance, repair, upkeep, right? It's on us. Yeah, yeah, and it, it stays percentage of total revenues, right?
They can still factor that in.
So there's some things we may want to talk about, we don't need to hit all that tonight because we have a contract with a great operator that's done great for us historically, that there's value there. But we need to have a discussion about what that looks like going forward long term. Because there might be other ways to look at it. And, and you get the same economic and community benefit because it's still operating as campground. Those people are still there, but it's not operating under the current conditions. We need to, we need to evaluate that a little more and I'm not prepared to say, you know, us staffing it in-house is more lucrative because of this, I don't know, I haven't looked at it.
I just wanted to throw something out there.
Real quick.
You mentioned Waterton or somebody mentioned Waterton. You got to remember too, those people are paying a yearly fee to get into Waterton as well, that, they got to factor that in too, right? You know, I know it's a hundred and some bucks a, a year. But just talking to other people, they like our campground.
I like.
They like our campground better than they like any campground anywhere in Alberta. And that includes Waterton. And if they have to pay a little bit more, I, I'm positive that they're not going to be griping about it.
So one more quick question and then we'll break.
I could just add to that, ideally, it would be nice to have long-term sites, right? Because that's where you can make your money, because of the long-term site.
See, your contractor right now would argue that point with you. In fact, they, they will not take monthly reservations for July and August now. Because they make way more on a nightly basis.
Absolutely, they do.
Than they do on a monthly basis and they'll be full. July and August can be full on nightly stays. I get what you're saying and the work involved and the wear and tear, it's all less. We pay for the wear and tear. Right, so that's not a good deal. But they, yeah, the contractor would argue otherwise, but I fully understand, you look at the popularity of seasonal campgrounds in the region, huge.